Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our October fifteenth meeting. Uh, I'd like to call this meeting order and it looks like we got a good crowd this morning and ask Mr. Slade for a word of prayer.
For the glory of St. Anthony's giving us this, thank you for this, thank you for uh this opportunity that we have together, together, come together to conduct this county, participate in our government. Father, enjoy the freedoms that you have bestowed upon us, to give you the praise and glory for those freedoms. We know that they come from you. They don't come from government, they don't come from man. Father, thank you for the freedoms that you give us to participate together, to gather together, to petition our government. I could go through all the issues and, and father, to make good and wise decisions that are in keeping with your will. We ask for your hand and guidance today. I pray, Father, that you'll settle your peace on these men as they uh conduct the business of county, as they use their skills and the abilities that you've given them to serve their fellow man. Thank you for the commitment they made, the sacrifice that they made. God, I praise you for the men and the women who are out there trying to protect us every day. Father, bless them, bless their families, keep them safe, bring them home. Christ's sake.
Amen. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? Anybody? Okay. Old business.
Make the motion to approve October six.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent. Has everybody had time to look over the consent agenda? Any questions?
Yeah, so that number uh is under others. Okay, is that appropriate putting that person over all insurance other than health? Well, aren't we about to go with asset on?
This relates to all our hands today.
I know, but, but that doesn't spell out like property and auto.
Why don't we say excluding V C B S and excluding liability?
Tell me that y'all did this while I was gone.
Well, we, we also have auto, property.
How about employee related insurance?
Samuel first. I make motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes.
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes. Dr. McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Miss Stacy McNich.
Good morning.
Revisiting that um tax exemption for Primary Purpose Club under item A. See if you all have made a decision.
Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of? Uh, would you like to come up and explain a little bit?
Sheriff Schrader and um I own the building for the Primary Purpose Club Incorporated. And we are applying for tax exemption because it's, it's an A A building used for Alcoholics Anonymous. There is no rent that's collected. Everything that is given is a member contribution and that goes to utilities and supplies. So we don't have the capacity to collect rent in order to pay property tax and we want to continue to be providing those Alcoholics Anonymous services for Rankin County. And so it's imperative that, you know, that we could get a little leeway here and that way we still can afford to do this stuff.
Is there, is there other business operated out of that?
No, it's only Alcoholics Anonymous and it's, it's for one particular group right now, Primary Purpose Group in Mississippi.
But is, are they out of California, the head office, Primary Purpose?
No, there's different um primary purposes. It's, it's just a group name. I know there's one actually in Texas. But that uh Primary Purpose Group in Mississippi, that's, that's just our group on rural, rural North Beardham and.
Well, do they pay a hundred and fifty dollar membership?
No, there's no membership fees. It's all contributions, which is one or two dollars in a basket that's passed around as a seventh rendition. So there is no funds that's raised as Alcoholics Anonymous.
I make the motion to approve the exemption.
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Give a way, Jay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Road work accomplished September and road work scheduled for October.
I make the motion to approve.
I second that motion. Brad made a motion, I second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, while I'm up here at Greenfield Project, we're, we're well dressing up today. Uh, some shoulder work, but we've got pipes installed on that project and uh pre-levelled back over. We'll have to kind of come back and pre-level. Again, in a few weeks over those pipes because of the sinking, but everything going as scheduled like we had planned.
Well, I appreciate the road crew jumping on this and getting knocked out and it wasn't very minimal issues with the traffic. Yeah, and uh, everybody out there appreciates y'all.
Aye. Where we, tell, tell me where we at on the Hollybush Bridge?
Uh, just starting to set, they've got through with the vents, driving the piles, they're moving.
Through with the piling?
Yes, sure. They're moving to put the deck on. Uh, probably next week we'll start getting stuff ready for. If everything goes right, Steve, getting ready to do our approach ramps off of it. Uh, I'm hoping in two weeks, you know, we've got it back on. We gotta get inspection on it and everything.
Yep.
From state aid, so it's gonna be a little bit of a process right there.
Yep, okay.
So we're having, am I right then? We have to do state aid inspectors.
Yeah, that's right. Initial inspections now are totally controlled by an outside consultant. We can't do the initial inspection like we used to. We're a little bit at their mercy, but we're, we've notified them where we are and when we think we're gonna be ready for that, so.
Well, we have to have the approach ramps going, rails, asphalt down, where they're coming through all that.
Okay, good.
Soon as that field gets through with that, we'll start that process, Steve, so.
Aye.
It'll take us about a week to get that prepped and ready, uh, because that bridge does sit a little higher.
Yep.
But I'm hoping the next couple of weeks we've got that on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tim Parker, county engineer.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Uh, first item we have is on the demolition disposal of asbestos building materials at the former Brandon Cement Plant. That product gets complete, we recommend approval of pay request number one, which is the final pay request from Snyder Environmental Construction. In the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, and authority to issue that check.
I make the motion to approve.
Brad made a motion, Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
That was a heck of a deal. I think that's a record. One pay request and the final.
And no increase.
No change order.
No change. Who was over that?
I believe I was in charge of that.
Oh, oh.
Pretty sure. Can I get back with you in a few months to make sure it's still okay?
Yeah, well.
My project.
I was trying to give him a little bit of credit, I just didn't see him.
Just what we talked about, Mr. President. I don't, I don't keep.
Yeah.
I don't keep with that question.
Yeah, I saw him talk about it at the coffee party.
All in favor?
Fastest claim of credit ever.
One I didn't have to think about.
When's the next bid's coming?
Couldn't have been rehearsed.
The bids for the demolition part now.
We hope to have that in the paper the next couple of weeks and then we'll be ready to go with it.
So y'all have everything ready on it?
Yeah, well, we're still finishing up some, some of the documents on the uh, the technical side, but yeah, everything's ready. I mean.
Okay.
And we've got, the main thing we were waiting on from this, the, this project was their certification that they had removed all the asbestos and shown. So we've got that now in hand from Snyder.
Okay.
Item B, Mr. President, is on the uh Pine Brook subdivision. That's an ARPA project. That project is now complete. We're recommending approval of change order number three, which is a summary change order in the amount of an increase of five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents for adjustment of estimated to final quantities and that authorization is based on the reasons listed there below by the board.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second. Dr. McLeod made a motion, Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the same project, uh Pine Brook. We recommend approval of payout number thirteen, which is the final payout from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services in the amount of ninety-five thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents, and authority to issue that check.
I make a motion to approve it.
I second. Dr. McLeod made a motion, I second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Mr. President, is a subdivision called the Preserve. Uh, this is phase one A we're talking about. This is a P R, in, on P R V land, so it's a P R V subdivision. The county is just uh responsible for the uh, the roads in there. And that has been completed. We've done our final inspection. Uh, we recommend approval of the final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and ninety dollars for phase one A.
I make a motion.
Second.
Dr. McLeod made a motion, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We also have item E, which is phase one B. They didn't think they were gonna have one B ready, uh, the way the meetings were following, but they, so they planted it separately, but it is ready. We've done inspection on it also. We recommend approval of that final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of fifty-four thousand and ninety-four dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
Dr. McLeod made a motion, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, I got a question. Do we know, I may, we may not have been advised, but who, are they gonna sell the lots? Whoever, or is there one builder developer that's gonna battle up and build the houses?
I do not know. I, I have not been advised of that.
Craig?
No, sir.
Okay.
We can try to find out, Steve.
Did y'all have a discussion during pre-development about?
How many parcels is, how many half tops?
It's, it's several of them. I don't know the total number, but uh.
Hundred fifty?
No, it's, it's probably, it's over fifty for sure.
Who's the develop?
Uh, it's Reservoir Development LLC or something. I, I think there, there's a, I've got the plat here, it's inside.
It's going to significantly affect the pills for school.
Yes, it is.
And water. Now, they got this water. I mean.
They got reservoir.
That's water.
That's sewer. They got sewer too.
School will be impacted.
Reservoir North LLC and signing for that is Jeff Webb.
That's Lake County Board Attorney. He's in here protesting the taxes on uh, Sunset Parade.
Yeah, on Sunset, yeah.
That's Jeff Webb. Apparently he needs to sell some lots so he can pay his taxes.
Aye. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Take my.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, Mr. President, is on Gunner Road, phase three. We're requesting authority to advertise that project. That's a district one project.
I make a motion? I made a motion, Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
So what is our uh estimate?
One point four.
That's the third thing. This is the last piece. It's on the curb gutter.
That's the closest to four.
Right, it's the closest.
It'll take you to the end zone right away.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Morning.
Steve, we are super happy to see you back in the saddle, sir. Um, let's see.
I never looked so forward to being at a board meeting than I have in the last two weeks.
We, we appreciate the effort, uh, and it helps us with our core requirement. So thank you for being here. Gentlemen, uh, under my section, the first four items, A, B, C, and D are to set public hearings for nine A M. Those will be on October the thirtieth. I would ask for a motion for those first four items.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next three, the next four items, E, F, G, and H are to set public hearings for November the third at nine A M. And you see those listed there as well. One motion would suffice if that's accepted.
I make a motion.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Dr. McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
First item under the public hearing section will be for the Thomas V. Ainsworth Conditional Use Permit Request at eight twenty-two Bethel Road. It's a district three property. I'm gonna open that public hearing. Gentlemen, Mr. Ainsworth is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a used car lot, a maximum of three vehicles at eight twenty-two Bethel Road. This is a three point one acre parcel. It's owned eight one. The proposed use uh is classified as a C three use. Uh, Mr. Ainsworth will be the sole employee. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday by appointment only and Saturday from nine A M. to two P M. Uh, the applicant uh has applied for a used car dealer's license, which requires a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Uh, we also have some additional staff related conditions that we would want to address with the board as we move through this process. Uh, first, let me ask this. Uh, Ms. Calhoun, this is your district. Would you like for me to go through the proposed staff conditions before we actually conduct the rest of the hearing?
We can say the uh, the dark trend and not read the whole thing?
Yes, sir. All right, I understood.
All right.
Uh, we've got a, a listing here of, I'll just give you the highlights. Uh, there's an inventory limitation. Uh, the conditional use, if granted, cannot be transferred to any third party without the board's authorization. No onsite advertising. Uh, the hours of operation are as proposed. We would require hours of operation that can be enforced. There are lighting controls. If any lighting is used at this location, it has to be oriented in such a way that it does not affect adjacent properties. Uh, there is noise control. There is a parking requirement that has to do with customer parking. There is a compliance with all licensing requirements. There is a display area surface that has to be installed. It can be asphalt, it can be other materials that are acceptable to the board. Uh, and there is a property maintenance responsibility. It has to be kept clean and orderly. Uh, there is a, a duration limit so that the community development folks are able to actually police and enforce the regulation. So the app, uh, the conditional use permit would have a limitation in terms of its duration and they would have to be renewed. There is a, a requirement that the use of the property maintain as much as possible the residential character of this area. And any violation of the conditions could result in a revocation of the conditional use permit.
All right.
So those would be the conditions that the staff would recommend be appended if the board decides to move forward and grant a conditional use.
Is there any restriction on auto repair?
Yeah, it's, it's covered under the noise uh section. Uh, it, it does not prohibit automobile repair. It just simply says that if there is any. There cannot be any major mechanical repair work or body work or painting work done that's conducted on site, so.
And it said there's no signage or advertisement?
Right, so the, the signage would have to be in accordance with the county's sign permit. This would not grant a sign permit as a part of this part. It would have to be a separate request that's handled through community development.
Sounds like you want to do more of it on the internet or they, you know, they come out and.
Pretty much.
Yeah, just instead of just an actual car lot, maybe buy and somebody come out and make an appointment.
Yes, sir. By appointment and uh, and, and not so much just attract, attracting general, the general populace by way of signage.
And we're not rezoning the property. We're just applying for a conditional use.
Conditional use. It would remain eight one. And if you change, it goes away, right? Yes, so if there's a sale of the property, that non-transferability without board authorization, any sale of the property. That's in there. Any change of ownership, it's not transferable. It just simply uh has to go back through the permit process again for any subsequent owner of the property.
And community development, y'all sent out how many letters? A hundred?
Yes, sir.
A hundred letters within a mile or two mile radius of this?
Yes, sir.
How many, did y'all get all the letters back?
We got um, most of those back, yes, sir.
Did y'all get response from anybody as far as?
We got one call.
One call.
Well, two calls, one in favor and one was just didn't want commercial um around them.
I got you.
So at this time, uh, with your permission, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Thomas Ainsworth Conditional Use Permit Request. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Should you please step forth?
Just state your name and address for the record when you get to the podium.
Good morning, sir. Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steven Walker, seven eighty-seven Bethel Road. I think I called Brad. Talked to him about this. Um, first let me say I'm not wanna, you know, negatively impact anybody on making a dollar on their property. Uh, but if it is, like you guys say, internet only, why, why can't that be kept? Not as advertised vehicles on the road, you know, have them at his house, parked like a normal car. Display them, let them come, look, that kind of deal. I don't feel like that's implementing in a positive way. Adding something else on Bethel Road that really is gonna take away from, from the neighborhood. I just don't see that that's a, a favorable um deal to go on out there. I mean, there's already some things that need to be addressed that we talked about on Bethel Road and I just don't think there needs to be another problem possibly of advertising.
He is, he's, I really, Mr. Ainsworth is going, doing it the right way compared to a lot of folks who put out two or three vehicles or buy two or three. And he is trying to do everything in accordance to what the county and, and it will be monitored.
Who's gonna monitor it?
He's the owner. I mean, he's gonna be the one on site.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm saying if you say there's a.
Community development will be monitoring.
Two or three cars. I mean, is somebody gonna be going by there weekly to monitor that to make sure that there's no more?
Well, I would assure you though, if he goes outside of what's being proposed, that we'll be getting phone calls.
And I'd love for you to call me. You see four vehicles out there, not his personal vehicle, but more than.
And like I said, that's not something I want to have to do and whatever roads you guys live on, I'm just don't, not sure that you would want the same thing on if it was some other roadside Bethel, so.
But only, only other side of this, other side of coin really, is if he was to go like what you suggest, somebody call and complain, then he is in the wrong, you know? And then he'd have to come back and start this whole process over. And it'd be a negative connotation then too, you know?
Right, and like I said, I just don't wanna open the door up for that to even happen because once it, once the door's open for that to happen, chances are it doesn't get.
You do it for one, you can do it for another.
Exactly.
And it's non-transferable, so I mean, if something ever happens, he sells and moves.
Right, well, at the end of the day, you guys make the decision. I'm, I'm a resident on Bethel Road. I'm not in support of it, so uh, just.
How long has Mr. Ainsworth lived on that road? How long has Mr. Ainsworth lived on that road?
No idea.
Well, I mean, I think there's family property all around where this is, yeah. But let's hear from a few of the others. Appreciate you, Stephen.
I think we had one more.
Good morning.
Good morning. I live at eighth one, two Bethel Road, which is right next door to this property. And I don't really want a car lot next to my house. It's a residential area and I'm just not in favor, in favor of it.
Can you give your name, please, ma'am?
Luana Ainsworth.
Okay.
Are you related?
I am. He is my nephew.
Pretty strong.
I love him, but I don't want a car lot next to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone else to speak in opposition on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm used to parishing, they live within seven of Bethel Road, and I've got two questions. I wanna know. Is this gonna affect our taxes on our houses and on our lamps?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
That's all I wanna know.
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Gentlemen, do we need to hear from Mr. Ainsworth?
If you'd like to come up and address anything.
Will.
I don't know if they're gonna address anything at Thanksgiving dinner.
How you doing, Mr. Ainsworth?
My name is, uh, I'm good. My name is Thomas Ainsworth. Uh, everybody knows me as Brad and most of those back there. Uh, Glenn's son, but yes, I, to answer your question, there's a bunch of land there, the Ainsworths. And I've lived there, actually was born on Bethel Road, moved off for a little while with my parents, but I've been back for twenty, yeah, right at twenty years now. Uh, and I grew up on Bethel Road. My grandpa, uh, so yes, I, I do not want to commercialize Bethel Road at all. I am just going for a, I'm trying to get a used car or dealer license. And to do that, you do have to have a physical dealership. And I, but I, I wanna do a hundred percent used car sales online. That's what my goal is. I'm, I'm shooting for a business plan. I shoot selling twenty-five to thirty vehicles a year for this first year if, if everything is approved. And the only change on the property would be, once we get the sign permit, uh, would be a, a four, four, four foot by eight foot sign is what is required by the D M V. And uh, or Department of Revenue, excuse me. And, yeah, and like you said, I've got the ingress, ingress and egress there. So I would have to put just some gravel in. I mean, it's already packed gravel there now with grass growing over it. They used to have them up at homes that, that sit right there. And so there's an old driveway pad. Um, and that's, and then I have a shed that I'm gonna add, add to, just to add a little office space. So there, and the vehicles, I'm a max three. I'm probably gonna just start out with one, maybe two at the most, just because of capital expense. Uh, I'm just starting out. I've got a full-time job and that's why I'm doing it by appointment only because as they, as they write me back from say Marketplace, uh, Car Gurus, wherever I list, that's the main two places on my list, as they write me, then I'll schedule an appointment to meet with them. And then I will bring the vehicle out. I will probably keep it on the backside and bring them out to the lot. And so I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna advertise cars sitting on the front by the road. I don't wanna commercialize it. Now, I've lived out there for forty-four, yeah, forty-four years now. I mean, I remember when, I don't know if y'all remember, but the road used to be really narrow, full of trees and real pretty. And now it's all wide open and the Bethel Speedway. Uh, but I'm sure they all know. So I'm, I, the last thing I wanna do is make it more commercialized. I love the country feel out there. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm. But my goal is to, like you said, it's a conditional use permit that has to be renewed. My goal is to do this for about, hopefully, max of two years and then somewhere in Rankin County, possibly Highway forty-nine, possibly toward Pele Hachi, open up a dealership. This is just getting me started, getting my foot, you know, just getting my foot into the door of uh, selling used cars.
With the folks from Bethel here, that's.
Yes.
Your plans are to do mostly internet sales. The vehicles is gonna sit somewhere off, off the road until the day somebody's got a schedule appointment to come to look at.
And uh, I, I don't want vehicles lined up. I, I mean, I'm not trying to open up a used car dealership like that. At the, to get a dealer's license to be able to buy at the, at the dealer auction. You probably know, I see you shaking your head, so you understand the rules and uh, so you have to have a lot. And without, I found land in Pele Hachi that's already set up for C three. It's just five hundred dollars a month. And I'm just not ready to commit to an extra five hundred dollars a month. And so I'm just trying to get my, get my feet wet at selling cars. Then hopefully that I can go somewhere like that within a couple of years. Whole reason I'm changing, I'm trying to change career path because I got injured at work and it's killing me at work now, so.
Well, I don't, I sure don't fault you trying to make a living on your property that you own.
This is just, this is just to get me started. This is not a.
I don't want something.
You better go ahead and take that vow.
You better go ahead and take that five hundred dollars a month. It ain't gonna get cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, well, this, that was just for, for a little bit of land, so no building or anything.
How big is the lot that you currently have?
Three point one acres.
And you do live at this lot?
Yes, I live at the lot.
You'll be there.
But you're not gonna have other employees? You're the, you're the only employee, you're the only one that's gonna be there besides your family or whatever?
Yeah, me, my wife and two kids, so of course they're not gonna work with me, but, uh, just us. And yes, I'll still keep up the, keep up the, uh, the area the way I do now. Uh, as far as grass and all that, you know, there's no change with that. Uh, I've already, there's already, there's been two, uh, been a separate ingress and egress there from back when I had my mobile home there years ago.
I think, I think people are concerned that there's gonna be strangers coming and going all the time there.
There, I mean, other than if I have them set up a meeting with them, because like I said, I work from, uh, my aunt and uncle know, I'm gone all day. So I don't want cars sitting out at the road, people coming up to the house. That's something I do not want. I don't want people coming up around the house. Uh, that's why I'm not gonna have them right, have them at the road. I'm gonna have them behind my shed.
And you not planning on doing any kind of heavy duty mechanic work on these vehicles?
No, I don't, I don't have a shop, so.
All right, thank you.
Other than maybe changing oil or something, you know, which what I do on my own vehicles right now, so.
Is anybody here would like to speak on behalf in favor or?
Thank you, sir.
Cause we fix on the slogan.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Come on.
And I'm, I'm not against you doing this, I want you to understand that. But if, if, if he's talking about having them back at the shop, and that's where the car's gonna be, and he's already said that it's gonna be a sign put up. So that's gonna be presumably at the road. Why, I mean, why can that not be moved back to the shed and the lot be put back off the road if this, you know, you guys are gonna decide? But if, if all the work's gonna be done back there and that's where the car's gonna be, put, put the lot back there. You know, not on, not on the road where everybody driving by sees a sign, sees a building.
The advantage of me seeing a sign being there is they won't be going to the neighbor's house, knocking on their door, trying to get Mr. Ainsworth not knowing. You know, you know how the venue is up the road from, I mean, the signs right there on the side of the road where people see it and not going up, driving back and forth.
Yeah, but it's a, about a two by two sign at the mailbox.
I mean, I think we can work with him on a sign that will, might not appease you or everybody, but I mean, I think we can make something nice.
Like I said, if, if, if that's where the car's gonna be and that's where the shop is gonna be, why not say that it has to be so many feet off the highway back toward the shop? If, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give options and not just negatively say, I don't-
We're not pulling the signage yet, but-
It might be, you know, a good, you know, to discuss it, hey, and he'd probably be willing to move the sign back so it's not so many feet, you know, so it is off the road. And if he agreed that he's gonna keep the cars, like he said, he told us, you know, behind the shed, you know, we could put that in a condition.
Designated the lot.
And that way it will be in condition. And then if something, you know, comes up, uh, well, hey, this is what he agreed to, this is what, you know, you agreed to. So you've got cars parked by the road, well, that's not what you agreed to, then, you know, somebody could call and-
And most time, I mean, if it's by appointment only, he's gonna be there and the car's gonna be pulled out there to the road. So when the buyer's coming in, they'll see the vehicle there.
I mean, I get it.
Yeah.
But at the same time, that could happen back there at the shed, not out on the highway, you know?
Does it reflect a specific area in this three point, whatever acres? By law, by state law, he's got, being a dealer, he's got to have so many square feet of lot, yeah.
But I'm saying it's not designated if it's a hundred foot from the road or four hundred foot from the road.
Or the back to sign off, you know, off of the road, a little bit.
Gentlemen, are we, we ready to move forward?
Yeah.
I believe we are.
All right. Uh, unless there are other, others to speak, unless the board has additional questions, we will close the public hearing.
All right. The vote we're taking, we're nothing to do with the signage at this time, are we?
At this point, no, yeah, this is not with the sign. I mean, we can put conditions on the sign.
We could vote to put a commercial business in that residential neighborhood.
This, this may be the time to put conditions on signage.
I'd like to, I'd like to see before we vote on any kind of signage or see a plan of where the sign, where it's possibly to be put at, or it's not just on the road.
I think the Department of Revenue has specific requirements on what it has to look size wise.
But they don't have any requirements on how close the road?
No, I, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
So, gentlemen, if I may, just help us move forward and specifically about the signage condition. Uh, it would, it would occur to me that there's already a condition in the proposed staff conditions that addresses signage. And it indicates that it will have to be by virtue of a permit for the sign that will have to be applied for and secured through the Office of Community Development. My thought would be that before community development acts on a later sign application for permit, that they have to communicate that with Mr. Calhoun, who can then help to establish where is the sign gonna be placed? That would be how the condition would read in this conditional use permit. It will be supervisor approval of the location. Does that seem acceptable, Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
All right. So you heard me go through the list of conditions. Uh, our recommendation would be that if the board intends to grant the conditional use permit, that the conditions as described in this hearing will be appended to that permit and will have to be followed. It's time it be appropriate to take action.
Before we do that, one more, one more question. In the conditional use, can, can the condition be that no vehicle be displayed except on the day of purchase or?
Yes, sir. Uh, that, that can be added to the condition. Um, let me look to see, display area, uh, we could probably include-
I don't know if that's already in there or not, I'm looking.
No, sir, it's, it's not, it's not specifically listed in our conditions that, the, the way that the application was presented and the way that the staff evaluated it, it was under the assumption that there would be three vehicles that would be displayed.
The max.
Now, the, the, the specific location of the lot on the property is, to my knowledge, has not been fully determined. I think Mr. Ainsworth indicated that there's an existing old mobile home site that has been vacated. So we, I think Mr. Ainsworth at least knows where on the property it is. I, I would suggest that maybe the staff help you figure out where exactly is this lot gonna be in relation to Bethel Road?
I do have that picture of that, you'd like to see it?
Yeah. All right, hold on, come here. So this is where he's gonna be displaying them at right here. Office. If he's planning on keeping them back here, he's pulling them out there to say or something.
Okay. I think Brad, you can make, you can make it clear to, to Mr. Ainsworth, he's here. Make it clear as a part of this that, that the, the board's preference would be that the vehicles be only displayed once there is an appointment for, uh, viewing the vehicle. That, that, that is when they get displayed, at the time that there is an appointment scheduled, put them on the area, otherwise keep them back at the shop.
Are you good with that, Mr. Ainsworth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to approve with those conditions.
Brad made a motion to approve.
Time from left to second.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh. Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm gonna have to go against it. Once we start down this slope, it gets slippery or slick. Mr. Ainsworth probably would be a really good guy and take care, he's been out there a long time. But what about the next guy that comes? Well, this, this would die when he sells the property.
I know, I know that. The other part, Brad, is like, let's say somebody else on Bethel Road wants to do the same thing. That's the issue. We really are, we're making it commercial. Even though he has all the best intentions in the world, but that's not to say in two years from now, we don't have cars stacked up out there because we approved it. So, and trying to help him in Thanksgiving would probably be the best thing for us to do tonight.
That's what I'm gonna approve. Yep. That's three.
Motion carries.
Good. Doctor Clow, you in favor? Okay, so it's three, two. All right. All right. That, uh, that permit will be issued with those conditions. Uh, the next item, gentlemen, is a public hearing on the Diane Owens conditional use permit at two eighty-seven McCullough McLennan, it's a District One property. I'm gonna open that public hearing. Diane Owens is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an after-school center at two eighty-seven McCullough McLennan Road. The center will serve children ages five to twelve and provide supervised structured programming that includes academic support, recreational activities, arts and crafts, enrichment opportunities. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, two thirty P M. to six P M. Full day programming may be offered on school holidays, teacher work days, and during summer break from seven A M. to six P M. All activities will take place within the building or in designated outdoor play areas that comply with local safety and licensing requirements. Ms. Owens currently runs the daycare that is next door to this location. And the property consists of one acre, it's on A one. That public hearing is open. We've received no calls in opposition. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Diane Owens conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on the matter. Unless the board has questions of the applicant, it would be appropriate to look forward and take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I made a motion to approve, Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a public hearing on the Donna Burks conditional use permit, three seventy-two Swan Drive. Okay. Ken, Ken? Yeah, it's, it's on here. I was just looking, it's, uh, we had it backwards. That's good. I, I found it, never mind. Uh, Donna Burks is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental. This would be at three seventy-two Swan Drive. This is a two-bedroom, two-bath, uh, property, has eleven hundred and twenty square feet. Purchased for remodeling and investment. Uh, initially it targeted long-term stays for travel nurses and medical staff, uh, seeking an off-site accommodation. Its primary short-term revenue stream is generated through rentals to visitors such as families, travelers, sports and concert event attendees, with a focus on maximizing returns to recover the renovation costs. Property is carefully micromanaged and guest screened to ensure suitability and to maintain quality standards, making it a strategic investment for short-term rentals. Ms. Burks has also provided a list of house rules, uh, and this property is located in the Barnett Bend three subdivision, it's on R one B. So this is in accordance with our short-term rental policy, as you guys know, uh, our regulations. Uh, and they are required to carry a conditional use permit in order to operate this short-term rental. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition of the Donna Burks conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Gentlemen, I don't see anyone here, uh, to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, we do have a standard list of staff recommended short-term rental, uh, requirements. I can quickly go through those with you just as a reminder.
Yeah.
All right. Conditional use permit for a short-term rental is approved with the following conditions. No parking on the public street. No solid waste collection containers may be left at the street. All of the garbage, once it's picked up, any, any containers have to be returned to the garage, uh, the carport or, or where they are normally kept up next to the house. Occupancy rules must be posted in a prominent location inside the home. The owner must retain a record of occupants with name, address, phone number and age, and those records have to be maintained for five years. No parties, no parties of any kind are permitted on the property. The conditional use permit cannot be assigned to any other party without board supervisor's authorization. No commercial activities of any kind can be permitted or run out of the short-term rental. No commercial or large equipment is allowed on the property. No, nothing like that of any kind. Uh, only passenger vehicles are allowed. And the conditional use permit expires annually. It has to be renewed in accordance with our regulation. So that is our standard list of short-term rental obligations. If there are others that we need to add, this is the time to do that, uh, at the time that you're considering the conditional use. Otherwise, these would be the conditions that go with the permit.
So renewed annually? I'd like to feed through the tax collector's office if they can.
What fee is that? How much is that fee?
Five hundred a year? Five hundred a year? Or no?
That's wrong.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the permit's a thousand and then five hundred annually. Sorry, I was getting it.
So do they need a business license?
No, sir. Uh, the, the, since it's an in, in rem, I'm throwing lawyer stuff at you. It's, it, it's associated with the property itself. So as long as it complies with land use, it doesn't look any different than just normal home occupancy. So we don't treat that as a separate commercial operation. It's a land use regulation.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve. Doctor McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, the next item, gentlemen, is item L, a public hearing on the Ken Faulkner conditional use permit is actually in KLF Farms LLC. That, I'm gonna assume, uh, Mr. Faulkner's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna assume that that's Mr. Faulkner's LLC and he's a member of it. Good. Uh, he's seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres on Highway eighteen. The parcel is K five dash ninety-eight. It's a hundred acre piece of property, it's on A one. KLF Farms LLC is applied for the four acre notice of exempt mining operation through Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. And they've provided a construction entrance location and they've met all of the erosion control requirements. We've received no calls in opposition on this matter. And I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the KLF Farms LLC conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, let me quickly go through our conditions that apply typically that will apply to our exempt mining operations. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, seven A M. to seven P M. during central daylight time and eight to five during central standard time. Uh, no Sunday operations are permitted. Uh, they, uh, the operators are required to keep a water truck on site for dust control if that's required, if that's necessary. They are required to keep any of the public roads that serve as access free and clear of all debris on a daily basis and be responsible for any damage to any of the county roads that are a part of the haul route. Uh, they must post a trucks entering highway sign. Uh, the conditional use permit is granted for the four acres that is exempt under the DQ permit and only those four acres. And we require some form of staking typically so that our staff is able to easily monitor the area that is subject to the mining permit. Hopefully that makes sense. Placement of and maintenance of a two-hundred-foot gravel construction entrance is required, two-hundred feet into the property to allow for controlling any mud and keeping large chunks of soil material off of the public road. Those are the conditions we typically append to the conditional use permit. Our recommendation would be to do that in this case. Unless you have questions of the applicant, it's appropriate then to take action.
The only thing, Ken, when you get, if you get a contract to haul a lot of dirt, would you just reach out to me or the road department and give us the route that you're planning on taking with the trucks? I hadn't had any complaints and this everything. I drive by it most every day and hadn't seen any issues, so.
And he is coming out on State Highway, Highway eighteen, so.
I'm passing along a compliment that I got recently at a collection of board supervisors' attorneys. Uh, we have meetings about twice a year, and, um, I, I was complimented on your behalf by virtue of the way that we handle a lot of our larger, heavy truck permitting and traffic control. Uh, there are a number of counties around that are much more aggressive about that, and it doesn't seem to work very well for them. Uh, it's very difficult to police. They really appreciate a board supervisors that says, you know, the best way to deal with this is for there to be good, clear, adequate communication. If you're gonna operate a dirt pit, if you're gonna move timber, uh, then simply communicating with the road department and evaluating appropriate routes, and then alerting the road department if we start see, seeing damage occurring, that system works better than you're just gonna be responsible. So, uh, I, I told them I would pass that compliment along to you guys. That seems to be a very workable way to do things, and I appreciate our road department being proactive in that and helping us with these routes.
I'm making a motion to approve with the condition.
Second.
Brad made a motion to approve. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, item M is authority of the board to execute an agreement for digital mapping services. This is gonna relate to Ms. Stacey McNinch's office, uh, the Tax Assessor's office. Uh, Ms. McNinch presented you guys with this proposal and, and alerted you to this service that her office believes will be of great benefit, not only to the Tax Assessor's office, but also to multiple other offices across the county. This would be an agreement calling for a two-year commitment, uh, each year, the annual cost is seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, following the conclusion of the, uh, initial two-year term, the agreement allows for a renewal of that service if we're happy and they are happy. And at that time, we will, subject to your discretion, we'll enter into a follow-up agreement and determine what the cost will be at that time. I'd ask for a motion to authorize that.
I make that motion.
Uh, second. Steve made a motion, I seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, I've got a couple of matters that, one personnel, one, uh, that's litigation that we'll wanna address with you in executive session.
Mr. Hicks?
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, first item is approval of the final summary change order. The change order is in the amount of a reduction of two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. That's on our reservoir east ARPA project. And also approval of the final payout in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety cents in the way of issuing that check.
Could you, could you repeat the first sentence, please?
Yes. It's a decrease in the contract of two hundred fifty thousand.
I didn't know that was a typo, or that was a decrease.
He's gonna say that was his job now. Who was in charge of that? I was.
That decrease of two fifty, is that before or after we paid us one eighty-six?
Well, the, the one eighty-six will complete the entire contract amount.
And, and then the, the contract will be reduced to two hundred fifty thousand?
So, we had about, what, four hundred and so, some thousand dollars left on the contract?
Yeah.
So, we're only having to pay a hundred and eighty-six towards the amount.
You're netting two fifty.
We're, we are netting two fifty, y'all, y'all write that down.
Well, I did, I underlined it.
Steve was in charge of that project.
Yes, that's my project.
That is the district project.
It is.
So, we cut the grass out there?
Uh, it's been sprayed, it's been bush-hogged.
Okay.
Looks good. I'm gonna go look, I'm gonna go look at it.
You know, we still need to go over a plan for the future.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll make a note, this is the completion of our ARPA program.
Do you want to hear that?
I'm, I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
I'm gonna correct, Mr. Hicks, because I think we're still owed a number of reimbursements, aren't we?
We are, but this is the completion of our construction projects.
Yes, got it.
So, which guy did it?
Just fail them.
I think I have a question, probably for executive, about some land.
Next.
Alright, item B is approval of payouts number six and seven, and this is our chiller replacement. We've finally gotten that all completed and done and tidied up, uh, and issued a check in the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
And just to note, that one came in ten thousand under budget.
Yeah.
And I was in charge of that. With Tim's help.
Let me call the judge, I know that Keith was in charge.
Uh, item C also relates to our chiller project, and that's paying our, uh, architect and engineers that worked on the project their last payment of, uh, one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and forty, issue that check.
Make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion, Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
And my final item is, uh, a discussion and some potential action on our county insurance. Uh, if you remember from our last meeting, those of you that were here, uh, Guy and Paul came and presented-
I resent that statement.
Well.
I wasn't here either, Steve, so.
I was just explaining, we had someone come and explain our insurance options for the upcoming year.
Excused absence.
So, he went through the, uh, renewal of our existing insurance. Um, he went over the MASSIT program and an option of being self-insured. So, we kinda tabled this until today to see what the board's, uh, intention was to move forward, with our insurance on the property. General law enforcement.
I make a motion that we go with, uh, MASSIT for our insurance needs.
I second that motion. Jay made a motion, I second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.
Alright, and, uh-
Good work, Guy.
There was, there was-
No fault, good work.
There's one other, uh, thing I'd like to address with you. Um, they did present the options of reducing on our volunteer fire department or increasing the deductible amounts, and what they had recommended, or what they suggested was to, um, raise our deductible, and I don't know what the current deductible is, but what they're recommending is to increase the property deduction up to a thousand dollars. I think it's at five hundred?
It's five hundred, ain't it, Guy?
I think it, I think they said five hundred, which is extremely low.
That wasn't real confident, yeah.
Would Mr. Warren like to get up here and explain it, or, you know?
Well, if I look back to the last six, we're ready to do that, uh, look, time was two thousand and fifteen, and the county would've made money every year by raising the deductions.
Yeah.
So, it makes sense to increase the deductions, it's not a whole lot of increase, but it's a pretty significant amount of savings.
Yeah, i- if we increase the deduction, deductible to a thousand dollars, it would save us about forty-three hundred on the premium. If we increase it to five thousand dollars, it would save us, um, seventeen five.
So, on the, we're looking back at our expenses, if we had something of a wrecked vehicle or what have you, are they-
Well, this is on property.
I thought we did volunteer fire.
I'm sorry. It, yes, property for the volunteer fire department. This is, this is on-
They're mine, okay.
Yeah, so, on some of these properties, the volunteer fire departments would be paying the deductible.
I got you, alright.
Some of the buildings that we own, we'd be paying the deductible.
I thought it was on a volunteer fire.
I, I would stay with one thousand.
Well, I meant-
Well, you're talking about volunteer fire, but it's different lines, like the auto property, and if you do, like, to auto raise it to a five thousand dollars, it's a thirty-five thousand dollars in savings.
So, our expenses, though, that we've had, where would that, our usual expenses? I mean, are we spending five thousand or less than five thousand?
No, that's what you're saying, we would, we would've made money, so, but we-
Every year.
So, if we go to five thousand?
Even at five thousand, you looked at it.
Yes, I mean, you, you'd be saving quite a bit of money.
Seventeen thousand.
History says you'd save money every year.
The first year we do it, we'll probably have all kinds of-
Our, our current, well, you'd have to have, 'cause our current deductible on the auto for fire is two thousand, I believe.
So, you're gambling three thousand dollars, uh, to save thirty-five.
Alright.
Now, Jay's a gambler.
So, he'll just give me permission to, um-
Work with him?
Yeah, work with him on, increase the deductible.
Alright, you got our permission.
Alright. Do us a good job.
And we'll bring the, the agreement for the volunteer fire next month.
Alright, okay.
I saved us two hundred and fifty thousand, I said what you could.
Sam, is a copy of the Langford Volunteer Fire Department request in the packet, do you know? Okay, gentlemen, there's a, I've written a request, uh, to the board of supervisors from the Langford Volunteer Fire Department that is making a request for an increase in the fire protection district millage that was initially assigned when the Langford Fire Protection District was created last year. Uh, by law, you were, uh, precluded from, uh, enacting a millage in, greater than two, than two mills. That is the maximum that could be appended by, by virtue of that action that was taken. And so, the department has come back and has, by virtue of what they're saying in the letter here, I would encourage you to read through it, you see the justifications there. This is just simply an acknowledgement that we have received the written request. You're not being asked to act. Uh, there is a process that we have to go through before you can act. There is a public hearing, there is a notification that must be made. Uh, there's a lot of responsibilities that fall primarily on-
Where was your main reasoning need to go up?
Jay, uh, it says, uh, while we can make necessary essential purchases of utilities, tools, equipment, insurance, and other basic operating expense, expenses with our funding, we are finding it difficult to allocate money in the budget to accommodate future capital projects. We know that in the next five years, we will need to make investments in a new fire engine tanker, a new breathing air system, as well as major renovations and expansion at our fire station. Our current income will not sustain these improvements, these improvements that are needed to effectively deliver emergency services to the community. That's straight out of the letter, so, uh, again, y- your questions that you have about the request need to be, they need to be addressed. Uh, the purpose for today is simply to acknowledge that we've received the written request. It's now on the minutes, you've got it, and we need to respond to this written request. So, I need some direction. Are we going to move forward with the process to entertain this?
I would like to, I would like to.
Alright, so, the next step in the process will be the adoption of a resolution of intent. That would be the next thing that is presented to you. And that, that's assuming that the board, the majority of the board, wants to adopt the resolution of intent. We will move forward to publish that resolution in the newspaper, schedule a public hearing, have a public hearing, and then you will be asked to officially act on the request.
Hopefully, we'll get more in just the letter, you know, before we start to do that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, since it's on here for additional business, I need a motion uh, to authorize the board attorney to move forward with the process to evaluate this request.
Motion to authorize you to move forward in this process.
Okay.
Second.
Steve made a motion to authorize Mr. Slade to move forward with the process. Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, motion carries.
Gentlemen, as I warned, we've got a, a couple of matters, definitely, uh, a, a personnel matter, uh, or personnel matters, and, uh, a, a potential litigation matter to address in executive.
I make a motion to discuss the need going to executive session.
Second.
Brad made a motion to discuss the need to go into executive session. Dr. McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Personnel litigation, and apparently we got a potential land act, we need to discuss too.
Alright, make that motion.
I make motion.
Steve, Steve made a motion. Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.